All right, here we go. Good evening, everyone. This meeting is called the Order of the Meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. As always, these meetings are being video recorded, so conduct yourselves accordingly. We'll begin by taking a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Thank you. So we have a number of items on our agenda tonight. Let's begin with Town Clerk Marion Binaldi, who is here to request us to vote to approve the 2020 re-presincting plan for Medfield. Town Clerk Binaldi, welcome.
Thank you. Am I going here?
Why don't you go there? Yeah.
It's done every 10 years. It's a state law that requires the city or towns to create new precinct boundaries so that no shift in population will unfairly increase or diminish a particular voter's voice. And then those new precincting lines form the building blocks of the other districts, including the congressional districts, state senator, state rep districts. So this process got a little delayed due to COVID. I started this process with the LEDRC in April where they sent out drafts of maps and the blocks and the meets and bounds, and we were doing it off of estimates at that point.
Let people know what LEDRC is.
Oh, the LEDRC, I'm sorry. That's the Local Election Division Review Commission. It's a precincting review.
It's a state commission.
Yeah, it's made up of three members. It's the Attorney General, somebody from the Attorney General, somebody from the Secretary of State, and then I believe the governor appoints the final member.
Is that the Anti-Gerrymandering Committee, or no?
Well, I'm not sure.
No, it's a standing statutory committee.
So, the first draft came out, we were doing it on estimates at that point. The final numbers were not released from the state until August 12th. Once those numbers were released, we realized that we had to do everything over again because there was a little bit of an underestimation in the numbers. So, I got this final plan that I had to go through and approve, and go through and do the meets and bounds, check all the boundaries, and think we got this on September 20th. There's not many changes from the previous, which was 2010. There is a change up in Precinct 2, in the Crest Circle area, and there's also a small change in the Janes Avenue area, which is actually where we are right now, which is going, it was in Precinct 2, and it's going to be going into Precinct 4. It's essentially going to affect about 148 residents. So in terms of voting, in terms of the elections and the special town meeting that we have coming up, these plans do not take effect until the end of the year. They don't take effect until December 31st. So at that time, we'll be able to notify the different residents whose precinct has changed. And the great thing is, is that since we are staying with one polling location, the first election that we do with the new precincts will be in March, and at that point, we'll make sure that we have enough staff to just direct a few people. Thankfully, they won't have to go across downtown to a polling location, they'll be right there. So that is where we're at. So at this point, I'm asking you to approve it, and then what will happen is I package all this stuff up along with your formal approval. I send it back to the state, and then we go before the LEDRC one more time, go before them, and then if they approve it, then we're good to go for another 10 years, and then we have to remember how to do this 10 years from now.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Pete?
Couldn't you make the lines any straighter?
Believe it or not, if you look at the other one, I made them a little bit straighter. The Crest Circle one kind of peaked up, and I never really liked that, so I tried to straighten it out a little bit. That's about as straight as we can get.
No, you know, the numbers are very close, so congratulations on making it work.
Thank you.
It looks like some sort of massive picture puzzle or something that you have to...
Yes.
Gus?
Are you required to perambulate the precincts?
No.
Because that's the best of all.
I did not, I did not. I sat with Tracy's help, and we went, Tracy Clank, who's our election warden, by the way, she and I were going through all of the maps over and over again. But no, I didn't walk it.
Okay. So just because, this is the way my mind works, I'm curious. I spotted three changes between the, is that there were only three places that appeared to change?
Yes.
Okay, so I did that, okay.
Pretty good, huh?
And my further observation would be, I took the variances, the absolute variances from the current map, total 7.45, so basically that's a measure of how far off exactly equal are we, and noted that the new one is only 7.6, which still says there's hardly any change.
Right.
So, and which then leads me to believe that neither party or no one on the political front would have any problems with any of these changes.
I don't think so. That's the hope.
And Marion, will this then feed into the state redistricting in terms of?
Yes, and you know, I'm sure you guys know that there was that bill that passed yesterday that to be on...
It was signed by the governor yesterday.
Yeah, it was signed by the governor yesterday. So that basically was giving them the right to essentially start doing the redistricting without the re-presincting, because again, everything timewise is kind of all screwed up. It's not really going to affect us, because like I said, I'm going to get this out the door. I want it all kind of in and filed before they get going with that. So, just trying to fight the timeline a little bit, but...
All right. Mark, Christine, anything?
No, Marion and I reviewed it this morning.
It's only really an issue when you have a former government where it's dependent on the precincts, where you had a former government and you had caucuses, we're running on a precinct basis, and it might have some local consequences.
Especially here where we only have one polling place.
Right.
I know that's an issue in Boston where they've got pretty good variation in terms of wait times and all that, and at different...
You have to have polling places, unless the, unless the precincts are bought, you have to have a certain necessary number of separate polling places.
And that's where it gets tricky for the voters. When I went through this with Jimmy Mullen to kind of preempt what I was walking into even before I got elected, and he had 11 polling locations in Milton, so it got, you know, he was a good person to learn from, let's put it that way.
Yeah. All right, well I think we then need a motion from Mr. Clerk to...
Move that we approve the 2020 re-presincting plan.
I second that motion.
Well, in favor, I oppose.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I will sign this for you, and you'll be good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we are welcoming Barry Dunn to discuss the Medfield Local Rapid Recovery Program Final Report.
They're both attending the Zoom, so Kevin Price and Carrie Willett are...
All right, welcome to Kevin Price and Carrie Willett from Barry Dunn. We'll get you up on the big screen shortly.
Do have a brief presentation that we'd like to share.
Those are the best kinds, so thank you.
Yes, we came before the board earlier this year and gave a little bit of a background on this program. So just quick introductions, my name's Kevin Price, principal with Barry Dunn. With me have Carrie Willett, who is a senior consultant. Carrie and I have been working closely with Sarah and others at the town on this rapid recovery plan project, and we are at the final stage, and we wanted to come back today to give an update on where we are at. So as mentioned, we do have a brief presentation, so just have a quick agenda that we'll go through. So I'll provide just a very high level of project background. There were three phases in this project. I previously came and presented before the board at the conclusion of Phase 1, so I'll just highlight quickly the Phase 1 and Phase 2 work performed, and then Carrie will go through and describe the most recent phase, which I think is probably the phase that will be most exciting. It has the product of the final plan, which I know has been posted on the website, and maybe some of you had a chance to review, and then we'll conclude with a slide just around some of the funding opportunities that are part of the program. So overall project background, in December of last year, the town submitted an application to the Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD, to take part in a local rapid recovery planning program. Barry Dunn was identified as a facilitator to assist with this program, and we were paired up with the town. There were 119 total communities that are participating in this program. As I mentioned, there were three phases for this program. The first was an initial diagnostic phase, which kicked off in March. That included a site visit from the Barry Dunn team, looking at the study area, and concluded with the submission of some data that was required by DHCD. It included some information we collected through our site visit, as well as a lot of information from publicly available sources, like census data. And that was to establish a baseline of information so that DHCD could collect that for all 119 communities. After that, we got into Phase 2, which is the project recommendations, where we started to identify possible projects for inclusion. And then, oh, sorry, we got into Phase 3, which is the plan development. There is a LRRP website, which has a lot more background on the program. Participants have a lot more detail on the work that has been performed. So Phase 1, just to mention, this was a site visit, data collection. We do have the study area that was submitted as part of initial application, and based on some of the feedback that we received last time from this board, we know that there's interest in expanding one of these balance slightly to include an additional business. And so we did have a very open approach to collecting some input, particularly in Phase 2, which Carrie will describe in a moment. But just real quickly, Phase 1, there were three key questions that we were looking to address, and that was, how conducive is the physical environment to meet the needs and expectations of businesses and customers? Who are the customers of the businesses in the study area? And what have the impacts of COVID-19 been?
For Phase 2, this involved developing project ideas that was based on the data that was collected in Phase 1, some of the background research that was done, as well as community feedback. Once we had some preliminary project ideas, we also had meetings with two different firms serving as subject matter experts for our three proposed projects, and those were Beta Group and BSC Group, who worked with three of the projects. We continued community engagement efforts through Phase 2. The first part of the community engagement was the business survey that was conducted as part of Phase 1. We also included a community survey for additional feedback from residents and other stakeholders, and also created a social pinpoint site to gather additional comments, and that also served to provide information about the project to the public. This shows some of the themes from the public comments that we received from the businesses, from the survey, and from the social pinpoint comments, wanting some more sidewalks throughout downtown, concerns about traffic and safety, looking for additional shopping and dining options. There were several comments about the Dale Street School and many power lines underground, and also wanting to see some more events and amenities downtown, things like a farmer's market, concerts, and playgrounds, those types of things. Moving on to our project recommendations, I'll just give a very high level of the projects that we're recommending, and we'll leave some time for questions at the end. The first project, install wayfinding signage. This project was previously proposed by the town, and the plan here provides some additional guidance on moving forward with the project, identifying some funding opportunities, and considering just a long-term approach to how to implement the wayfinding signage, developing and design, sign design and guidelines to implement the signage strategically over several years, knowing that it's hard to implement this type of project in full at one time. So the goal of the project is to create a sense of visual cohesiveness for the downtown, so having an image that's recognizable as downtown Medfield, and also to help users navigate the area, including finding landmarks like the town offices or the public parking, which I know was, came up as an issue, and finally, to generally just improve the downtown experience for visitors in hopes that they'll have a good experience and people will come back and/or stay longer in downtown. Second project is in response to some comments from staff and businesses, as well as residents, about traffic and safety related to pedestrian use in downtown. And with the primary goal of this project being to make downtown safer and more accessible and just more pleasant place to walk around. So this is the launch of traffic calming pilot project. And we found some really great examples of this type of pilot project, it plus several sources of funding through the state. And this type of project can be done relatively quickly with very little financial investment. So this would involve installing, like you've seen in some of the photos, some temporary traffic calming measures such as curb bump hulks, bike lanes, pedestrian walkways, any distance to crosswalks, and using that pilot project to collect data to then guide future long-term transportation planning or rapid recovery issues. The third project is following the same theme as Project 2, is to adopt a complete street policy, write a visualization plan, and to conduct a risk safety audit. This would really formalize the town's support for the complete streets principle of providing safety access options for all travel modes and for users of all ages and abilities. NASTOT has developed a really great funding program to support project implementation, and also to provide financial assistance to communities to develop prioritization plans and conduct risk safety audits, in some cases where that's appropriate. So we felt that this was a really great opportunity for the town to leverage that funding that's available through the state and support an existing goal of the community that's in the, has a plan to create a safer and more inclusive street network, and to be responsive to some of the comments from the community. The fourth project is to establish a facade improvement grant program, and the purpose of this program is to provide direct support through grant funding to local businesses and to encourage further investment by the property improvements, meaning that if some businesses improve their storefronts, then that will help them to do so as well, and to enhance the overall appearance of the district. So this is a very popular program structure that's been implemented in a lot of other municipalities, and it's a great way to get funding correctly to small businesses operating more quickly and quickly have an impact to revitalize downtowns. The plan provides a recommendation for how to structure the program based on best practices, and also thinking about Medfield and how to implement this process in an easy way for the town to manage. And our final project is to create a business portal. So there are two parts to this project, a business directory, which would be a useful tool for the town to be able to reach up to the business community, as well as a resource for residents and visitors to help find businesses, grow town businesses. The business directory is intended to be part of a larger business forum on the town website, which would include additional resources for current businesses and new businesses as well. So this would include existing resources that businesses may need permitting, licensing information, as well as additional resources, things like real estate information for new businesses looking for space, business development guides, and possibly funding resources. Then this is something that are the existing towns' various resources, it could grow as new information is developed or created. And finally, our funding opportunities, this is just a summary, but a few of the funding opportunities, and there is a longer list, or there will be a longer list in the final for absolute plan that we provide to you with some additional grant opportunities. But as you know, funding is available to municipalities through the Corvatar State Health Recovery Fund, which can be used for economic development initiatives like these five projects to support economic recovery from COVID-19. And the guidance that we've been given by the state is that that's interpreted to be broadly to include all of these projects. The Massachusetts Downtown Initiative has a technical assistance program to provide funding for consulting services, which should be applicable for any of these projects where you would need consulting services. And there are several grant programs that also support smaller community-driven projects that are really encouraged, and especially for projects that enhance community spaces and encourage mobility. And then the last one is the Community Compact IT Grant Program for technology innovation, so that could be used for the business portal project. And that's, that's what we had to present, but we're happy to answer any questions you have about projects specifically or grant initiatives.
Well, thank you both very much. That was very informative. Pete, any questions?
No, some comments if you want those.
Or comments. Pete, any comments?
So the reactions that I had when I looked through this was that a lot of the businesses in Medfield are just one story tall, and the town would probably be better served if a lot of our downtown was two or three stories tall, so that we could have the retail under and the residential above it. I don't know how you achieve that. I guess that's an issue for the private property owners to undertake if they want to. It was just sort of an observation. There was a suggestion of spending money on the facades, and I was thinking that what we need is maybe more than a facade change. It'd be nice to have a building change. I think the business directory is a good idea. I tried to get that going with a retail directory for, I started collecting information for that, and then handed it over to somebody else to take care of. My experience with Jim James was when I said to him my idea about that, he said, "What retail? It's me and one other store." So that set me back a little.
Well, it probably wasn't that much work to assemble the list then.
I actually had more than that on my list already at that point, so. I had gotten to him last, I guess. And then my favorite concept that I've come up with is a construction of a large greenhouse over the area behind the gazebo, so that it would be usable in the winter, so a meeting place for residents in town to use during the winter that could be, you could have maybe coffee and maybe rotating foods of different types, and place for concerts, a place for meetings. The kids in town just like to get a place where they can meet, so that might provide something for them. That's it.
The gazebo greenhouse coming soon.
Like at Tangerini's, only bigger.
Right.
I was picturing Faneal Hall on that one.
Gus?
Well, I had a lot of specific questions that I'm not going to go into here. First off, I actually liked the report, and what I liked about it was that there's a lot of ideas that are there that are definitely worth considering and trying to figure out how they would work in Medfield. The other piece that I liked is that, I liked your illustrations, not just of the ones here in town, but of other places to kind of give me a better sense of what some of those were all about. So that was, that was the second thing that I just enjoyed about the report. An overall reaction I had on the report is that some of the goals are, in effect, they're in conflict with other goals. So if we want to start making the streets more accessible to different kinds of transportation, I'm having a hard time picturing how that goal meshes with improving traffic flow. So there's a, I'm struggling a little bit with, on one hand, wanting to improve traffic flow, which presumably would mean not to impede the progress, and on the other hand, trying to make things more accessible to people, which effectively is going to, I think, have the effect of constricting streets, because there's not too much room to go, you know, we can't widen the streets in many of these places. So that was one dilemma that I saw, just it's not, I'm not, this is all fine, but we've got some work to do to figure out how to do that.
So there's some context regarding that Sarah Repose, a town planner, in our conversations and in our planning program over the next several years, we know that we at some point are going to be programming the reconstruction of 109. So part of the suggestions that Barry Dunn put in there for traffic calming and other bike lanes and multimodal options is to do something a little bit easier and without the great expense to test out those ideas before something more permanent and expensive gets placed.
So that's why I just, I saw that as being a pressure. There's, I think the townwide master plan, and now this, have both called for more public And my question is, from where to where? Because I don't know whether we're talking about, we need, we want to commute a rail station, which I think is probably not going to happen even if we wanted it. But then I'm not even sure if that's what we're talking about, or are we talking about a neighborhood shuttle service that circulates around?
Sure, because it did come up recently with the housing production plan, it's definitely come up with the state hospital master plan and the townwide master plan, and it's definitely something that needs a little bit more probing to find out exactly what people are interested in, but there are options that could, there could be a range of options, like it could be, you know, park in a central location and use the COA van for commuter trips to the rail station when it's not being used for the seniors. Other options are having broader routes for the COA van. In the state hospital master plan, at least in the conversations, I think it ended up in the final plan, was the notion of having that electric Ollie bus do, you know, a service around the campus, but something similar could be doing trips to CVS or Shaw's, places like that.
Okay.
And the stations.
If we ever get to that, that's, that kind of a concept made more sense to me than some of the light rail going from one fixed place to another.
Yeah, some of these things are not standalone options, they're for consideration down the road, but part of what the purpose of this grant program is, is to assess within the local community what's going to help the businesses be more resilient sooner than later. And I think that, based on what we heard explicitly from the businesses, that it wasn't so much the infusion of giving them cash, it's making the downtown a better, more enjoyable place to be and safer. I remember when we were doing the Downtown Summit in 2016 with the Economic Development Committee, we heard, I heard for the first time, that people thought that the intersection of Main Street and North Street was hostile, and I thought that was a pretty aggressive way to put it, but I've been paying more attention, I've been hearing that more and more, so I'm understanding it better, and when I'm using it, I'm looking and observing how other people are using it. So I am thinking about ways to improve these intersections and helping people feel safer.
That's, that actually was, was one of the questions I had. One of the things I highlighted in here was the number of places where we talked about the streets needing to be safer, and I basically said, "How are we defining safe?"
Yes.
Because I don't think we've had an inordinate number of vehicle collisions with pedestrians. So I understand pedestrians saying, "Gee, I don't want to have to wait for the walk light, but it's too wide for me to run across."
Yeah.
If you're dealing with, that's, you know, if you're looking at ways to do that, I'm just saying, it's 109. You know, you're not going to do a whole lot there. I did catch the thing about the pedestrian island in the middle of the intersection, and then you have, I mean, you have to have a divided road, and it wasn't, like I said, I like the ideas that get put on the table.
A lot of the options, yeah.
I found myself basically saying, "We got a whole lot of trading off to do here to get to something actionable." Three final points. I noted that virtually every recommendation required a consultant, and interestingly enough, because you guys came up with so many alternative funding, usually when I hit on that, it has to do with taxes and what it's going to cost a town. I actually looked at this and said, "I'm not even that worried about that." I am worried about using consultants to come in and tell us what to do, rather than, I didn't automatically go to, "We need consultants." For instance, the traffic calming. We've got a safety committee, and we've got a police chief... We've got a safety committee, and we've got a police chief, and it seems to me some of these things we could do on our own. And again, I'm not doing it on a cost-saving basis. I'm actually doing it from a control of the concept basis. So I was a little skeptical on some of the places where we had consultants. On the business portal, my quick reaction is that the business directory side of that should be separate from the regulatory. If I want to start a business in Medfield, I don't see any advantage to putting those two things together into a single portal because half of it will be useless information for whichever half wants the other half of the portal.
Can I share a little anecdote about how that came about? Last year, recall, we were eligible for the Community Development Block Grant COVID micro grants for -- I'm sorry, grants for microenterprises. And a microenterprise is a business with five or fewer employees. I had no way of sorting out the businesses who may fall into that category. We just had sort of a list of businesses, people who had business licenses. So it made me think that we really need to understand our business community a lot better.
So two points to that. My main point there was I don't think it's a single portal that does both the directory and the regulatory stuff because they're serving different purposes. The other sensitivity I had, if the town is going to develop a business portal, then that means the town has to have a plan for how it's going to maintain a business portal. And where my head was going on some of this is some of this directory information in terms of promotion for the business, it seems to me there should be some interest on the part of memo or the business community and town in general to -- they almost have more of an incentive to keep that information up to date than the town does. So my concern has the long-term maintenance issue, and even that's not totally cost-driven. It's just that the town getting involved, there's a certain, as I see it, a certain degree to which a town can contribute to economic growth. And if you go beyond that, where the town is driving the economic growth, then we've crossed the line, that I think would be a mistake for us. So that was that.
I see that.
And I think those are the main -- I actually liked it. I just said -- oh, I know what it was. The other one was with the safe streets, A, we've already got some things going on there, but leaving that aside, as I was reading and as I was seeing the examples from NADIC, Jeremy Marsette's name immediately came to my head as the guy that we ought to look to tap to help us figure out how to do that, given the awards that NADIC got. So that was it.
Just saw that the other night. Great.
Thank you. So I thought this was great. I really appreciate it, and I like the fact that there are recommendations here that we can kind of keep these in mind as we're doing things. That's the first thing that jumped to my mind, Sarah, was the reconstruction of 109 and Main Street. And I think the wayfinding idea is a really good one because it was reminded of another study that we did with respect to parking, right? We did a parking study several years ago to find out if we needed more parking in the downtown. The conclusion was pretty clear, we don't need more parking in the downtown.
Better signage.
But I think we need better signage so people know, as long as they don't mind walking a block or two, that there's lots of places to park to walk through here, which has the added benefit of if people have to walk a little further, they can go by some businesses other than the one they intended to come see. So that was the first thing I thought of with the signs, is that pointing out where people can park, whether it's officially public or just an open lot, where there's typically a lot of spaces, like near Mark's office and otherwise in the downtown.
I thought you wanted the two-deck garage on James Avenue.
Me? No, no, no. No, so given the amount of spots, that would be a useful thing. So here you can park here, here's how you get there. And I think that would be very helpful so that people aren't trying to circle around and just park in the same six spots directly next to the place that they need to go was really helpful. And Pete, to your point about the second and third stories, stay tuned. We have something coming down the pike shortly from the Affordable Housing Trust that may address your interest in that.
Excellent. Thank you.
As well.
Thank you for anticipating my needs.
A coming attraction, but I want to thank you both. This is a really good report. It was -- and I think this is one of those that hopefully stays on the shelf but is used as we have opportunities for things and as the safety committee is looking at things and other folks looking at things, we can kind of.
I'd be happy to go talk to the safety committee at some point with some of these ideas. And I want to say for the record, all of the plans that we are working on get reviewed and looked at by me very often.
Yeah.
So trust your town planner with that.
I do trust her town planner. But thank you very much to Kevin and Carrie. Appreciate your work on this.
Yeah, they've been great.
Appreciate your coming in, and thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have to welcome Facilities Director Amy Collarin, who is here to make several requests of us to vote to approve $40,000 for the Memorial School Fire Panel System Replacement from the Municipal Buildings Stabilization Emergency Fund to authorize me to sign the Green Communities Grant application and to vote to approve a contract with AA Alanco Service Corporation for boiler preventative maintenance work at various town buildings. Welcome, Amy.
Hi, how are you? Can everyone here be okay?
Yes, indeed. Loud and clear. So you want to take us through each of these?
Sure. So I'll start off with the fire alarm panel, requesting some additional funding from the Municipal Building Stabilization Emergency Fund. So $25,000 was approved in the Municipal Building Stabilization Fund in fiscal year '23. We found that we wanted to replace some of the components. We realized that the fire alarm system is completely obsolete and not be able to -- we're not able to replace some of the certain components that we were hoping. So what's going on there? The panel goes into a trouble mode and needs to be set manually, and then we all -- someone has to call the fire department each time to let them know it's not a real emergency. So it's a light safety issue, and it's just, you know. So I'm requesting additional $40,000, not only to replace the fire alarm system to operate it as well.
Okay. Questions? Pete?
No, no, things are expensive, I guess, unfortunately.
Gus?
I do have a question, Amy. Chief Carrico was in here last week talking about the work he's doing to try to find a replacement for the fire boxes because the company that has the software is moving to a different mode, and they want to control everything. Is this box one -- he mentioned that there were a number of town boxes that he supports as well. My question is, is the technical issue he's dealing with in finding new software, are we replacing the equipment that's going to need to be replaced, or is this a separate system?
I believe it's a separate system, but I will certainly track back to him to see and make sure that this will work with whatever system that he's replacing. I know he had mentioned four, so -- but I will also.
Yeah, I would check on that because he was basically talking about having to swap out all of the boxes because the company that we've been using is moving to -- they basically want to control everything, and he's not prepared to do that, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, now I'll touch base with him on that for sure. Yeah, just to make sure it's compatible. Yep.
Okay. Christine or Nick or Mark?
No.
Okay. Nothing from me here, so do we have a motion?
With the understanding, you'll check with him to make sure this isn't a stupid expenditure, I move that we authorize or approve $40,000 for the Memorial School Fire Panel System Replacement from the Municipal Buildings Stabilization Emergency Fund.
I second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye opposed? All right, passes. Next is the vote to authorize me to sign the Green Communities Grant Application. I assume that's what this relates to here, the spreadsheet of.
Yes, you have a script. Can we go through the script one by one?
So this is -- this spreadsheet is, these are what we're asking for from the Green Communities Grant.
Yes, so each year, we can put into up to $200,000 for projects. So if you see down the G C funding, the green column down the bottom, we're requesting $172,904 of the $200,000 that's available, just to put the projects up. So if you want, we can go through line by line.
Well, I don't know if we need to do that. Why don't we start if we have any questions on any particular items? We can do that, and then we can go through the rest of it. So Pete, do you have any questions on the items requested?
No, no, not on what's requested, Amy. I just, you know, it seems a shame that we're not asking for the extra $28,000 if it's available, but that's all occurred to me.
Anything else, Pete?
No, that's it.
Gus? The only question I have, Amy, on the community contribution column, it says $81,500. Is that money that's actually carried in our budgets right now, or is that a new obligation?
So if I do want, I can walk through a couple of things for you. So the Blake School, the fourth item down. If you look over to the source of community contribution, in fiscal year 2022, it was $200,000 approved for the Municipal Building Stabilization Fund and Ward Project. When we did the engineering, it only came up, the project only came up to $93,020. And out of that, the G C funding is $40,000. So our contribution was $50,000, it was only $50,000, not the $200,000. So $150,000 can go back into the Municipal Building Stabilization Fund. So if you see some of the notes where it does say community contributions, the first one is $50,000. A little further down, there was $6,500 or some L D maybe. What we're anticipating was that $150,000 that can go back into the Municipal Stabilization Fund can get reappraisal in these projects. That sounds correct. We could do something like that.
And I'll just add for a little bit of context, the reason why you're seeing those community contributions is if you see the blue columns where it says BTU save per Green Communities Dollar. Working with Susan McPhee, who the town brought on to assist us with this, she recommended that the town make some contributions because Green Communities is not funding as many projects unless you receive a certain amount of BTU save per Green Communities Dollar. So by adding in some town dollars, we can increase our chances of getting funded.
Yeah, I wasn't disagreeing. I mean, $251,000 and $253,000 total project cost, $81,000 coming from the town. I'm not arguing with that. I was only questioning from a budgeting standpoint whether I was looking at new money obligations. And if I understood what you just said, Amy, actually, on net, we've already made these commitments, and some of -- effectively, some of these commitments are flowing back to the stabilization fund. So not only are they not new contributions, but they actually reflect that we were doing -- we got these projects done without having to actually expend everything we'd allocated, I think.
Well, it's a mixture. Some of them are going to be requested in this year's budget and some are in last year's budget.
But you've got a lot of room to play with if there was a -- let's see. So the 20 -- the $200,000 is a new request?
No, that was already appropriated.
Oh, yeah, 22. Okay, that sounds right. We're -- oh, the bottom one is new and the top one's new.
The top and bottom ones, yeah.
So $21,000. Okay, got it.
All right. Anything else, Nick, Christine, Mark? All right. This looks great, Amy. Thank you to Amy. Thank you to Susan for putting all of this together.
And I think it's a lot of work, Amy, so thank you so much for doing it for the town.
Sure. And Pete, just to add, the reason why we didn't get to that actual $200,000, we had no idea what this Lake Pot Water, what level we're talking to, especially for, you know, I had a place with $200,000. So we put that in as a request, but it went a lot cheaper than we thought, obviously. So I think that's why we didn't get to that $200,000, so.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's a rare bit of news these days to get a bid so much lower than what we appropriated, so we will take that good news where we can get it. So thank you for that. Do we have a motion to authorize me to sign the application?
I move that we authorize the chair to sign the Green Communities Grant Application.
I'll second that, but it has to be signed by Friday, I believe, isn't it?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
I am prepared to sign this tonight.
Excellent.
Tonight. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes. And finally, we're requested to vote to approve a contract with Alanco Service Corporation for boiler preventative maintenance work at various town buildings.
Yes, yeah, that's just something that hasn't been in place. So it's just a one-time-a-year. They come in, do a full clean-out of the boiler or burner system at each building.
Okay. Any questions, Pete?
No.
Gus? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve a contract with Alanco Service Corporation for boiler preventive maintenance work at various town buildings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries. It occurred to me, you know, looking at the name of the company, that as we get further and further away, explaining to younger people why it is there's a lot of businesses that begin with AA. I'm not sure they'll quite get why that is. It's probably a convention that is passing, I would imagine, in favor of whatever gets you to higher up in the Google search. So anything else for us, Amy?
No, that's it tonight. Thanks so much.
Well, thank you so much for your work, as always. It's much appreciated. I know you put in a lot of hours, both off-hours and on-hours and all of this stuff, and we appreciate it. You're a great asset to the town, and thank you so much for coming in.
Well, thanks so much for taking it.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have the Parks and Recreation Commission update.
So I just spoke with Kevin Ryder, who let me know he is still at the FAF Center. There are parents still picking up the kids, so if he could be on in about 15 minutes or so, he'll head down as soon as he's done.
That's fine. I'm glad that that's the reason why he's still at the FAF Center. He's not like trapped under something or collapsed in a sinkhole. Okay, we'll move up to our discussion of potential votes. First, to discuss and vote the flag and municipal use policy. This is one we discussed about a month ago on our ongoing codification of town policies. Any discussion on this?
Nothing here.
I think it looks fine.
All right, anything from anybody? All right, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the flag and municipal use policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Next, towns' financial policy, I think, are we deferring this one?
We are going to defer this one. I met with the Warren -- Nick and I met with the Warren Committee last night, and we received some comments from them last evening and today, and we just haven't had a chance to incorporate that into the document yet. So we'll have that on the agenda for the 19th.
Okay. In time for budget season.
Correct.
All right, in time for the budget season. All right, next, discussion of special town meeting.
So I just wanted to talk about, obviously, health considerations are at the forefront of all the discussions I'm having with Scott McDermott, our town moderator. We will, at the October 19th, ask you to call the special town meeting and set the town meeting, but we would like you to consider setting the time of town meeting for noon. We'll be meeting with the Board of Health in the next week or so to discuss indoors, outdoors, what our final logistics are. But given that we haven't made that decision as of today, we would like to set the meeting for noon so that people can start preparing for that day.
Pete?
That's fine with me. Sounds like a good plan.
Fine with me.
Yeah, noon works. I mean, it works indoor/outdoor, so it's kind of.
Right, it gives us a little more flexibility than 2:00.
Could I just, while we're talking about the special town meeting, just a couple of points? And I'm bringing these up in hopes that there may be some people watching this meeting that won't bother to send the selectmen requests for things that maybe we can clear up here and not have to send everybody replies. There's been requests that we've already seen for holding it outdoors.
Correct.
And I partly want to check my reply here to make sure that it's reasonable. I basically have said the selectmen have deferred voting to actually call the town meeting until the 19th of October so that we can in fact be -- wait as long as possible to get the updated guidance that comes through. So I think that that's true. I also commented in my reply, given the trends, it looks like we will be able to do it inside, given the trends. But I've also pointed out that we've had some informal discussions about taking a look at creating satellite rooms. If it is inside, looking at being satellite rooms, so that would help us to spread people out. So mostly, I'm checking to make sure anything I bothered to put into those emails that I have sent out does not violate anything.
Yep, all of those things are correct.
Second question that I've gotten several emails is, is there any way that, you know, we have kids, is there any way we can vote remotely? Mark, I've been telling you that the law does not allow that. You have to be here in person.
That's correct.
Okay, so that is correct.
For open town meeting.
Right. And the third issue has been, can families that, for whatever reason, can't get babysitters bring their kids with them to the town meeting? My reply to that is that the town meeting is open, the actual town meeting floor is for people who are registered voters. We actually have a special vote to allow non-taxpayers to merely be in attendance. We actually have a special vote to allow non-taxpayers to merely be in attendance. So the idea that we would have parents come in with several little children in tow and expect to sit in, however we do it, inside or outside, is not something that would be acceptable.
It's prohibited by the charter of the bylaws, but we have in the past, I believe, set up rooms with, kind of like, with volunteer.
So I would say at this point, those are all of the logistics that we are looking at.
Right.
And the town moderator will be at your meeting on the 19th to discuss some of those.
So it is my hope that people out there who have sent numerous similar emails have heard the answers to all their similar email questions right now, at least for the next two weeks.
Correct.
Thank you.
So those satellite rooms, there needs to be communication back and forth.
I'm on it.
They're working on it, Mark.
No, no, just for the benefit of.
Yes.
Yes. And Chairman of the Board of Health just confirmed with me that the town moderator will meet with them on October 13th to discuss this further.
Great. So we're working on those logistics. I got some of the same emails that you did, Gus.
Yes, you did.
I think we are, we are working on it, and we certainly are attuned to all of those issues. And by we, I really mean Christine and the moderator, but.
The imperial we.
The imperial we, yeah.
And I would just make the correction, Gus, that you said that the town meeting is for taxpayers, it's for residents. You can.
Registered voters.
Registered voters.
All right, so that you can be a renter and not a taxpayer and still vote.
Yeah, and we have a.
Didn't we have this conversation?
We have had this conversation before.
Didn't it wind up at taxpayers?
I, I would have to go back and review, but I know we've had this conversation before.
Well, let the record, it's a residents, registered voters.
Registered voters may attend.
May attend, welcome.
And point of fact, if you, and there are numerous people that pay taxes for commercial properties, whatever, and they're not entitled.
That's fair, yeah, that's right, yeah.
All right, anything else on this? All right. Uh, I think, is our collective bargaining, is this being deferred or are we?
No, you are prepared to sign this.
We are prepared to sign this.
You are prepared to sign.
Excellent, this has been on there here for a while. This is to vote to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Medfield and the Medfield Police League. This is the contract that we agreed to last year, was approved at last year's town meeting, and covers July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2022. We have begun or attempting to begin negotiations over an extension that would pick up where this one leaves off. But this is the contract currently in force. Any questions, comments, thoughts, motions? Pete?
I ju, well, I just find the whole process totally destructive of management, employee relations. I find it an unfortunate process that we have to go through, but I'm glad that it was done and that you guys have arrived at a solution, so thank you.
Gus?
So the, the observation that this is retroactive, actually going farther backwards than it's going forward, it's nobody's fault, I don't think, but it's, it would be kind of neat to have a contract that was covering the years to come rather than.
We are trying.
We are working very hard on that, Gus.
Working hard, I believe it's actually on my list of goals as well, so I'm trying very hard.
Wholeheartedly agree.
Okay. The second, the one question I had, which I think is pretty obvious, everything that changed is highlighted in yellow, so looking through everything in yellow is all I really needed to do.
Correct.
Okay. And then down at the end, the education incentives, everybody understands what those are. That's, that's clear how that works.
Yes.
Okay. Then I have no questions.
We have a motion.
I move that we approve the Medfield Police League, the collect, the collective bargaining agreement with the Medfield Police League, M C O P, A F L C I O, Local 257, for July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2022.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye, opposed? All right, passes. All right, well, apparently the kids are all picked up, and Kevin Ryder is here, so welcome Kevin Ryder. We're returning to the agenda item for Parks and Recreation update, and I guess the update is the programs are over for tonight at this point. Anything else?
Thank you for coming.
You want to go up to the? Oh, all right.
What do you mean we're missing one?
All right, well, let's move to the next one, which is a vote to approve a contract with Epsilon Associates for historic preservation and historic tax credit consulting services. Nick, you want to tell us what this is all about?
Sure. The Development Committee is seeking approval of this contract to work with Epsilon Associates to secure a preliminary determination from the National Park Service regarding selective demolition of some buildings at the Medfield State Hospital campus, the cottages slash the arboretum. The idea is if the town, you know, allows a disposition to go forward that may end up with the demolition of those buildings, does that potentially impact the tax credits elsewhere on the campus before, you know, making any final recommendation about a disposition? They, the Development Committee is seeking to have this information from the Park Service, and this is a program the Park Service runs that allows communities to go through this with them. I don't know, Gus, if you had anything to add from the other night?
Couple, maybe some background comments. First, this, I believe, is both the Park Service, but it sounds like we also get a preliminary readout from the Mass Historic Commission as well?
Yes, but as I think you recall from the conversation, theirs isn't as clear-cut necessarily as the National Park Service.
So the, the basic idea, the issue is that the arboretum in the, in the state hospital master plan was never viewed as being buildings that would be remediated and rebuilt in some historic renovation. Nonetheless, the build, the cottages in the arboretum are included in the list of contributing buildings. So the issue here is if we're not going to literally restore the cottages as they are, if they go away, what impact, if any, would that have on the ability for a developer in the main campus to take advantage of tax credits? The, there are a couple of other buildings that are on the campus, like the T V cottage, that technically are contributing buildings, but you can kind of imagine, first off, the cottage was always talked about as something to come down, and you can imagine the marketing value of a T V cottage is probably restricted. So there's a couple of issues there around wanting to get a readout. The National Park Service will give a preliminary readout, which is not binding, but at least it gives you an indicator of whether you could do what you're contemplating doing and probably not have it, you know, they'll give you whatever they think is the likely impact on tax credits. And we wouldn't want to move ahead with a plan that torpedo's the tax credits when all the plans, especially for Trinity, are built around taking advantage of tax credits. There were two, there were two proposers. It, it works out that Epsilon is, was the more expensive of the two proposals, the $7,500. The committee decided to go with the more expensive one because the other proposer, McCarthy, is actually working with CAM. So recognizing that there could be some cross-purpose interest there, we thought that was cleaner. And the numbers are not, we're talking small numbers. And I think that's it. That's all I have. And the Development Committee, as you know, is coming in on the 19th to give you a general update.
Pete, any questions?
No.
My only question about this, and I think this is, is fine, I mean, does this, is this work only relevant if we select the Trinity option, or is it relevant to either option?
Mostly, I think, you can, you can weigh in on this too, but I think mostly it's relevant for the Trinity option. However, one possible permutation here could be that we actually subdivide the project and break the arboretum out. So it's relevant in the sense that we need to know what we can do and what the impact of that could be.
With the, that certainly seems worth $7,500.
And there've been a number of questions as to whether the town, if it were to select Trinity as proposed, is leaving value on the table by not allowing maybe more development in that arboretum area.
Certainly a question somebody up here might ask at some point, and probably on the 19th. So, all right, I'm good with this, do the motion.
I move that we vote to approve the contract with Epsilon Associates for historic preservation and historic tax credit consulting services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, passes. All right, now, Kevin Ryder, for the third time, third time's the charm. Welcome to Parks and Recreation Director Kevin Ryder for a Parks and Recreation update.
So also acknowledge our commissioners that are here in attendance, Mel Stebo, Michael Parks, and Kirsten Young. I believe Nick Brown will be joining us, or is at least watching via YouTube, so. So I don't know where you'd like me to start. I know it's been a bit since I've seen you guys. I got a lot of information I can give you, I can give you a little bit of information. You tell me kind of where, where you'd like me to steer the conversation.
Why don't you give us some information?
Well, so when COVID hit, like, like a lot of departments, you know, we, we were hit hard. We had to cancel everything we were doing. Up to that point, there was a 13-year, 13, 13-month period where we were our busiest we had ever been. We had offered 121 programs during that 13-month span, and the outlook for the rest of the spring was, was tremendous. We had to cancel everything with COVID and kind of rethink what we were doing. During that, we saw a lot of usage outside, tennis courts, ball fields, people getting outside and recreating. So we kind of turned our focus to that to make sure those areas were good. In the meantime, I had an eye towards what that summer was going to be like for us. What could we do that summer to, in the midst of a pandemic? We were one of the few around to offer summer camp option. We did seven weeks of summer camp, thankfully, and, and credit to the staff that, that we have, pulled it off without any incident, which we thought was a major accomplishment on our end. Families that had, had kids that were secluded for, for months because of COVID, this was their first interaction socially with, with other kids. And, and parents commented to us throughout the process about how much that meant to both them and their kids, which, again, we, we were happy to play a small role in that. Moving forward, as COVID regulations were going up and down and sideways, we ran programs in the fall utilizing our outdoor space. And, and you're very thankful, last fall was one of the warmest ones we've ever had. And we were outside till, well, I ran, personally ran a gym class that was outside from September until the end of the school year. So every single Wednesday, we were outside with kids, running a gym class to give them that opportunity to be outside. In addition to that, ran a field hockey program that went into the first week of December. We were outside with soccer programs as long as we could, and the weather cooperated immensely for us. Ran summer camp again this past year, and with everything going on and being the second year of COVID and COVID cases kind of spiking and, and up and down, we had our largest enrollment in summer camp we've ever had. So we've, we've been, we've been battling with, with that, with the COVID and, and what we can and can't do. I know more now about COVID and COVID protocols and COVID regulations than I ever thought I would have to know about. My wife is sick of hearing me talk about COVID and COVID regulations and COVID policies, but we had a staff that was amazing from, from, from everyone. And, and I take myself out of that equation because staff we had absolutely knocked it out of ballpark. And ran the swim pond this summer, largest number of memberships we've ever had at the swim pond this past summer. All positives. I mean, I'm very excited and happy with, with how our staff took on the role, especially with how much information I had to throw at them on a regular basis, on a daily basis, on an hourly basis, about what we were doing. And, you know, the proof was, was in the product that we delivered and, and what the parents thought about what we were doing. So very pleased and very excited about that.
It's a great update.
So that's some information.
That is some information, it's great information.
Yeah.
It was awesome to see throughout. So Pete, questions, comments?
Kevin, I guess I, I would just ask about the finances. I'm, I'm so excited here that you have been busier than ever.
Sure.
In the past year, so I, I hope that financially that's excellent for you.
It is.
Although I have to assume that the COVID year was not so excellent.
Yeah, so, you know, for, for a string of years there, we were on an uptick. And I, I give updates to the, to the commission on, on a, on a regular basis about where our revenue stood. And without any additional space, our revenues kept going up, and that's because of the number of programs we're offering. I, I hate to keep saying compared to other towns and whatnot, but if you look at our offerings and what other towns offer, there's no comparison. You know, some are sports-centric, some are enrichment-centric, we are, we, we cater to everybody. We want something for everybody to be able to do. We hit, just pulling up my numbers here, in 2019, fiscal year 2019, we did about $740,000. The following year was COVID, and we took, we took a major hit. We had, I did more, I did roughly $220,000 in refunds alone for missed programs, missed camps, missed opportunities that, that we couldn't offer, or families were no longer comfortable when we were able to offer that they wanted to pull their children out. This past year, fiscal year of '21, we finished at $630,000. That included a, a rough start because we weren't running our normal programs. The end of '21 and the beginning of '22, the months of June and July, so this past June, this past July, we did almost $400,000. And that was just because of the camps that we were running and, and stuff like that. So we have seen that turn somewhat. Fall is a little different because it's still, you know, we still have protocols in place about usage inside the FAF Center and whatnot. Our outdoor programs are absolutely crushing it right now, you know, Saturday at McCarthy Park, and I don't know if you've been down there, Mike, but Saturday at McCarthy Park, you couldn't fit another car in there if you tried, you know? And, and again, we are seeing our largest numbers for our soccer programs than we've ever had, and I think a lot of it has to do with parents' just, they're now comfortable being outside, they want their kids involved, they want their kids socially interacting with other kids, and we're seeing an increase because of that.
I just want to let you know that the Park and Rec Kinder Soccer T-shirt that I got as a coach is one of my favorite T-shirts.
What was your record?
I will.
We don't keep records, Mike, there's no. What was your? Everyone gets a popsicle.
It got me started, you know, I had no conception of being a soccer coach. I had played soccer in high school, so I actually knew how to play a little bit, but you guys making me a soccer coach, so then when I transitioned, where my daughter transitioned to Medfield youth soccer, I just signed up to be a coach, and I was a coach right along, and it was one of the, the best things I ever did. It was really a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Anything else, Pete?
No.
Gus?
I got a bunch of stuff. I, I'm not sure if I wasn't the one who was beating the drum the longest to have you come in.
You weren't, weren't the one.
I wasn't the one, okay, so.
No, no, you weren't, weren't the one.
The, before I start, I, I've read the, the feedback that's been posted about the summer camp, and absolutely delighted. It's clear to me that, given everything we've gone through for two years, for you to have put together what you've put together is phenomenal.
Thank you.
From my standpoint, on top of that, at a time we weren't, we were going through COVID, I think Parks and Rec was probably one of, one of the bright points in this town, whether you were doing it deliberately, consciously, or directly, were contributing to maintaining the mental health of this town more, just because you were giving people things to do outside, you were getting kids outside. Personally, I believe that's an extremely important thing that I'm not actually technically qualified to assess, but I believe it is, and I believe it made a huge difference. So where I'm starting from here is I'm very, very happy.
Thank you.
With everything that I've seen you do for the past couple of years.
And I'll add to that, you mentioned the, the mental health aspect. During, during COVID, I went and, and got certified as a mental health first aid certificate. So thinking that was an important piece for not just the kids, but the staff that I see, we hire anywhere between 80 and 100 kids a summer to work for us. And, and knowing that they were coming out of something that no one had ever dealt with before, I felt, I hate to say obligation, but I felt it was part of my duty to have an outlet that they could talk to if, if they needed to, especially being around kids and, and how the cohorts work in school and stuff like that. So I thought the mental health aspect of this was at the top of the list, 100%.
So what prompted me originally, one of the first times I called Christine and said, So what prompted me originally, one of the first times I called Christine and said, you know, we ought to get Kevin in here. Cause the reason I asked was I realized I had lost the bubble about what you all were trying to do. Uh, and as my thinking has evolved over the summer, I actually now have two bubbles and I'm gonna, you may, if you're not prepared to comment on them now, that's great. Uh, take them as inputs and then at some point maybe they'll make some sense. The first bubble that I lost was, I don't know what kind of a facility Parks and Rec is trying to build because initially a couple of years ago, we had a big kind of fieldhouse like facility down South Hospital Road. And then in the last year plus or year or so, it's been basically FAFF plus part of Dale. And, and I don't care. It's just that I sat there and said, well, if it's that in-house type of in-town kind of, kind of facility, in my head at least, I said, that says the program is more directed probably toward younger ages, not as an industrial strength facility, you know, athletic facility. It's more of an in-town facility. The cost side of me said it probably won't be as expensive as the one down South Hospital Road. So my first issue was I don't actually know what it is you have as your vision for a building anymore. And that's one reason to bring in. The second place that my, my second bubble blossomed over the summer. And I said, there's actually two questions here. Parks and Rec should not be defined by a building. It's, I'm not saying you shouldn't have a building. I'm just saying the building shouldn't define what Parks and Rec is. Parks and Rec, the program should be looking more broadly at the town, the resources of the town and the activities of the town. Now, what probably prompted that was discussions about a new school where gee, we're, we're building an oversized gym and Parks and Rec will be able to use it. And it's like, okay, fine, but I haven't heard that. I heard you talking at the, the warrant. I, I watched, I watched about 12 hours of warrant committee meetings in the last week and, week and a half, two weeks. Uh, and I heard you talking about the various thoughts that you had, uh, around directions in wellness, directions in the arts, directions in studying. And as I was listening, I was saying, well, not even sure I agree that all of those directions make sense. But in the case of outreach, the, it was clear there was a collaboration. And I'm saying if we're gonna do those things, if it's arts, it's got to be a connection into CAM. And if it's studying, it ought to be a connection into the library where they already have some of this stuff. So I'm not, I'm not trying to push back or argue or dictate anything. What I'm saying is in my head right now, I have Parks and Rec, the program, which is not bounded by a physical building you have. And I kinda am trying to understand for myself what would, what, what might that look like when it's defined as a program which is tightly integrated with other activities here in town that are in those spaces? And, and like in the case of outreach, you're not trying to sit there and provide clinical services, but outreach said, but we could use outdoor things. And so it's that synergy that my sense is that there's more to be gained there by playing the Parks and Rec program bigger, not bounded by a physical asset. And I'm kind of curious what that should look like. And I, I don't have, I'm not trying to dictate an answer. I'm just sharing a perspective of where I'm at. And then there's a building and in my head I'm looking at, well, partly, if the building is in town, that to me says that there's a greater emphasis on the kinds of people that might use that building. And I, I, I have a good picture of what we could do if, so I'm not against that by any means. But that was a different story than three years ago. So I'm, I'm a little confused. Maybe, and, and the last piece of that, why I care about that is because we're looking at a school that is expensive. Uh, that I've already gone on record as saying is too expensive, but part of why I'm saying it's too expensive is because in the back of my mind, I'm saying as soon as that school's up, we're gonna have a discussion about Park and Rec facility. And are we gonna have that discussion 20 years from now or 10 years from now or five years from now? To me, we at least ought to know what it is we're doing. So you just got my brain, you got my brain dump on all that. I don't know how much of that you can comment on because I probably just gave you a whole framework that's not automatically something you're thinking about.
Well, you could take his third part first. Is that all right?
Which. So I would say, uh, starting with the outreach, we do work with outreach, um, on a regular basis. And, and I'm in touch with Chelsea and Kathy, um, on a lot of things. They help, um, with the Angel Fund and, and, and Medfield Foundation to provide opportunities for kids to go to camp. And so between us, we're, we're partnering and talking about that. Almost year round, um, that, that we have those discussions. So I don't see that. I, I see the similarities there for, for that part of the reasons as well. We also service the same age range of people when they talk to the kids. Um, so I think there's a natural synergy there as well. Um, as far as, as arts go, I've been doing arts programs here for 13 years. So that's nothing different than it's part, been part of our repertoire programs for, for 13 years. Theater.
By yourself as Parks and Rec or?
As partial rec.
Yep. So my point is I don't think that's where these programs are gonna grow, given, given the, given the effort that's going in and up at the state hospital. But I, I'm not trying to pull it from, away from you. I'm basically saying if the intention is to grow a program here, we need a mindset that says it's the program we're growing. It's not just our rice bowl that we're growing. And I, I, I'm not criticizing here. I'm saying when I heard you mention that, my, my, my head immediately went to, well, gee, we've got another group that's also looking to build an arts program. Are we gonna have a competing arts program or are we gonna have collaboration?
Well, what I, I mean, what I'm just saying is that we have been doing it. So this isn't something that we just thought of in the last year because of something going up at the state hospital. I've been running theater, drawing, cartooning classes for, for the 13 years I've been here. So I'm, I'm not saying that that was a reaction to anything else going on. I'm just pointing out this is something we have done successfully for, for a long time.
I'm looking at the future. I'm trying, I'm looking for the picture of the future. I'm not, I'm not.
Yep.
I'm not even focused on today. I'm saying, where is this all going?
Yep. I think part, part of the, the focus of the area, um, around Dale and the FAFF, the two sites have always been looked at. So up at the hospital and down here to Dale and, and the FAFF area. The part about the Dale and the FAFF area that's always been, um, a, a positive for me is the, the closeness to Hinckley Pond. And our summer camp, as, as I talked about earlier, our summer camp is our busiest time. That's, that's where we make our mark. That's where a lot of people know us as, um, they see us for that eight weeks in the summer. We walk down to Hinckley Pond every single day. So kids go to Hinckley Pond every single day to go swimming. That would still, having something in that campus area would still allow us to do that. If we built up or we moved up to the, to the hospital or, or McCarthy Park, I'm now busing and, and trying to get kids down. So.
This is where I split the building from the program. I'm talking program here.
Yep. So I think the, I think program wise, that's where we need to be. If, if you're talking about just program wise, it, it's centrally located for us for where we need to be. Um, and the summer camp being the most important thing that we do, we, we need that, that proximity to, to Hinckley Pond.
So if, if, if the chapel were renovated to be a notable performance venue, you don't believe Parks and Rec would look to tap that resource?
I'm sure we would discuss it. I'm not saying we wouldn't.
Okay. Um, would the same logic apply to the gym if the, if the new school goes in on Wheelock, would the same logic apply?
About tapping into that to, to use that? We already use school property now.
Right.
So, so a hundred percent that we would, we would talk to Dr. Mars and the school committee about any space opportunities for us. But we also know that they have other obligations too, between their middle school and high school teams and, and any intramural athletes, athletics going on. So we do get space right now, um, based on availability or based on what we are running and what we're offering. So we don't have unlimited access to the Dale School or, you know, we use Memorial on Saturdays in the winter for our basketball program. We don't have unlimited use of that whenever we want. So I don't think we'd have, I don't think I'd have a key to the gym and just have access.
Gym space is at a high premium.
No, I understand that.
Very high premium.
The amount of thriving we do to Four Kicks and 10 acre and other places for.
Wellesley and wherever else that.
So I wasn't looking for answers. I mean, if you had them, I would have taken them, but I, I was trying to get recalibrated a little bit on where your thinking was. And I guess in some ways I'm saying what I, what you're doing with Parks and Rec is great. Uh, it's noteworthy. I think it's played an important role in the town, certainly, especially in the last two years. And that piece of it, my head goes, so how big could Parks and Rec become if we weren't constraining it to a building that we can or can't get? And maybe all I'm saying there is I encourage you to think about it that way.
Absolutely.
Uh, from the standpoint of the building, am I safe concluding at this point in time, Parks and Rec would like an in-town facility? That's when we're talking about what a Parks and Rec facility would be. The thing we're talking about is an in-town facility.
As opposed to?
As opposed to the prior proposal.
Up at the hospital.
At the hospital.
I think that would be my preference.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's helpful for me. Okay. And my spirit of my questions is so I could figure out what it is you'd like to do. So I can think of what makes sense to try to allow that to happen. It's not, it's not any, tell me what you're doing so I can.
No, and I, I mean, I, it's no secret how old the FAFF center is and, and, and what state that, that building is in. I mean, there's, you know, uh, bricks that, that need replacing and, um, you know, there's warps in the floor now where there never were warps before. We've had a flood in our kitchen. We had a flood in our main hall. So, I mean, we had a flood in our basement, you know, where we had six feet of water, roughly four feet of water. So I, I, there's no, there's no, uh, I'm not hiding anything that we're, we're in a building that, you know, could use some love.
Just so you know, if that's the, if that's the locational answer, and if the Dale Street School is not reused, my personal vision would be that a big part of the Dale Street School would be used for senior housing. Whether there's a part of it for Park and Rec doesn't, for, you know, whatever, that's not the issue. That Parks and Rec would have FAFF and the, where the court, where the current courts are. That would become the in-house, the in-town facility. And you would have a facility that would be appropriate for school age children whenever they're not in school. It would be right out the back for seniors when the school age children are in school to use. So if we went down there, that's, I've been pushing senior housing, but that's why, cause I can picture suddenly this is all making a whole lot of sense to me. Uh, so just so you know where I'm, where I'm coming from on what the potential future could look like. It could look like that and you'd wind up getting a senior population that you'd be supporting when the schools are in session. And you'd be getting the school, the, the in-town, you know, young, probably younger kids more so than others. But, you know, you'd have that facility.
I, I think it's also, I, I know there's a myth out there that we only do after school programming. We have programming going on all day long, nine in the morning on. We have.
Is it for adults during the day?
Adults, toddlers, preschool, you know, so we, we are not, I know, I know, I've heard people ask me or, or talk to me about that we're only after school. We're far from that. We do a lot of stuff, um, during the day for, um, kids that aren't in the school system currently and, um, for, for parents and, and adults that have kids in the school system or looking for something to do. We're not strictly an after school program. So we do use our space, um, throughout the day.
Yeah. Well, I underestimated that piece of it, but my point is I think.
And that wasn't just to you. That was, I, I've heard that discussion outside here.
My point is a Parks and Rec facility, if it really is intended to support the whole town, I can see that potential future for that site. If, and it's a capital I N F, if the schools decide that that's not land they need. Um, I could see that being a good solution. There's people in town that are, what are we gonna do with this area? It's like, I could see what we could do with this area. And I think there would be a lot of people that would be happy. I think the Parks and Rec program would be even stronger than it is. Uh, and it, and in that context, I would kind of like to see a facility sooner rather than later, which leads to what the town has to be able to afford sooner rather than later.
Sure.
Yeah. I, I think that Gus could coexist nicely on that side. Long return in terms of figuring one side and the other.
Yeah.
Senior housing on one side and the parking wreck on the other. You could see a nice little setup there. Um, a couple of questions from the Q and A, four comments for you, Kevin, in the Q and A. We've got from Hilly Passas regarding the buildings for Parks and Rec and programming. Um, I think Medfield should put having a scout house on the radar. Several communities around us have scout houses, providing meeting spaces, activity spaces, uh, gear storage and outdoor camping for the youngest scouts. Uh, especially the Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts have a great need of such space. I'll note that Jerry Castangian still wants his space back up at the hospital. Probably looking for that in any of the plans when the scouts are gonna get that back. That was a comment. And then a question from Christine McQ Potts, Seven Curve Street. Uh, the market study conducted by Park and Rec, oop, sorry. The market study conducted by Parks and Rec prior to feasibility study indicated a need for full-size basketball courts. And it cited the lack of courts at the Kingsbury Club. However, since that time, Kingsbury Club has built two new courts. And now with the school project incorporating a court, does Parks and Rec still anticipate needing more courts? Is the market study now at a date? I think that's the market study that went into the design of the larger fieldhouse proposal that you have.
Yeah, that was from our group out in Chicago that, that came in to do that.
So what's the answer to that?
I think you answered it earlier when you said you're still driving out of town for basketball practice. I, I don't think that that has the, we don't have access to the Kings, Kingsbury's a private club. We don't have access to that. I can't walk in there and say, I want to use the basketball courts. Um, so I don't think the, the, I think the need is still there that hasn't been satisfied. And, um, we still get requests from people that are new to town asking us how to use a basketball court.
And Metro Youth Basketball doesn't really use it much either from time to time, but it's not a regular part of the.
Right.
Cause they have their own AU programs.
Exactly. And we would use it more than just about, it wouldn't just be a basketball court. It'd be a multi-purpose, um, space that we would use it for other activities besides just basketball. I'm done.
You're done. Um, so I don't have, I, I think Gus asked most of the questions and covered most of the stuff. I mean, I, I will note as a, as a heavy user of your programs, um, that, um, I, I am continuing. We get all the emails. So I, I am continually amazed at the breadth of the programs that you have.
Thank you.
Um, and it does seem like when people are interested in something or you think there's a demand for something, you find a way to, to meet it. And so I, I, I expect in the future, to your point about the future, that, that there may be collaborations, um, with CAM in the future. Although as with the Kingsbury, there may be not necessarily competition there, but, but sort of both doing somewhat similar things. And, and I'm sure that Parks and Rec will adjust to meet the needs. I'm sure you could do a lot more. I mean, I, I will say Kevin, you, you really are, uh, you're good at everything, running, running the, the department. But I think coming up with programs and managing the programs, you really have done an outstanding job. It's been a huge improvement over the last, um, eight to 10 years.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'll make one more comment, just you prompted, all of the thought. Uh, I think it was two years ago, the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting in January. One of the sessions I sat in on was a speaker talking about, you know, town Parks and Rec programs. And the thrust of that was around how Parks and Rec programs could structure themselves to be successful self-supporting organizations. So there, this woman was coming from somewhere in the state and she was in a town, it might've been Brookline or she was at some point. And the town basically said, look, you want Parks and Rec, you gotta float your own boat. We don't wanna, you know, and. So the whole thing was a discussion about the market rate that you could charge for programs. When you were at the warrant committee meeting, you made a comment that the charter for the Parks and Rec has been to make recreation affordable for everyone in town. I totally endorse that. Uh, and the fact that you're both do, you're doing that and from at least what I heard you describe, which I'll take you at your word, did that with a quality of program that was qualitatively better than the other towns that were charging more. That's, I think, exactly what we want. That, yeah, I understand that means that we retain a, a commitment to supporting Parks and Rec. Uh, but I think for all the discussions we had, all the 40 B housing and with the town affordable. I think this is one of the things that Medfield's done for a long time with the right spirit. Uh, and it seems to me you've been doing it very successful because you're not only providing something at a low price, but you're providing something of high quality at a low price. Uh, and so that, that's also fit into my, my compliments to what you're doing.
Thank you.
And I think one of the underrated aspects of it, again, not to turn this into a Kevin writer praise session.
No, please do. I'm, I'm here. So.
He'll come back more often.
It's my, it's our dating anniversary, my wife and I, she reminded me that earlier today.
He'll be checking with you Christine to see when he, when he, when. No, no, also I would say, well, in one of the underrated aspects of what you do, and maybe it's not underrated, but it kind of goes, uh, unmentioned sometimes is the amount of jobs you provide for teenagers and the chance to have responsibility. You're talking about the staff and your camp. You're mostly talking about Medfield teenagers.
Medfield High School kids.
Camp where you are training and leading and doing all this stuff. And there's not a ton of work opportunities for a lot of teenagers in this part of anywhere. Um, and so that, that's a huge benefit for, for them as well.
I think we had 85 on staff this summer. So.
That's right.
And, and, you know, I, I say it every year. I, I tell these guys that every year, we get the best of the best, you know? And, and, you know, we, we over hire and that's one of the, the things I started when I came here. And when I say over hire, um, we get kids when they're younger and we are able to train them with the, with the older kids. So that when the older kids move on, the younger kids are ready to step up. So we kind of have this cycle going all the time where we always have quality leadership of our, our kids. quality leadership of our, our kids, always training the younger kids. So it's, it's, it's a model that's been working and, and, but it's because of the kids we have here, you know, and I give all the credit to them.
Super. Any comments from the commissioners who are here?
Want to give them.
Do you also wanna say some, what do you like about Kevin Beck? What's your favorite thing about Kevin, anybody else?
Apparently, everybody knew it was review week.
Great, well, Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you all for coming, for coming in. All right, just a couple more items. We have a request to vote to call the special town election from Monday, November 15th, 2021, and sign the special town election warrant. Is this one of the big ones?
Uh, it's a small one.
Ah.
Yeah, but there, but there are 15 of them.
Okay, great. We have a motion.
I move that we call a special town election for Monday, November 15th, 2021, and sign the special town election warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next, vote to approve a contract with Solar Design Associates for design and engineering services for a rooftop solar installation at the DPW Town Garage. Truth in advertising in that name. No need to ask what they do.
Fabulous introduction, I'm gonna ask you to hold that till the 19th.
Oh, okay, well, something to look forward to on the 19th. All right, Consent Agenda, the Medfield Foundation requests permission to place sandwich boards at the corner of North and Main and South and 27 from October 17th to October 31st for the Angel Run.
Recuse myself?
Pete is recused from that. And then there's a block party request for Rocky Lane on Saturday, October 30th, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM.
To make it easy, I'll recuse myself from that too.
Okay. Now you're free to be invited to that if you like.
Pete, are you accusing yourself because you're running in the Angel Run, or is it just the Medfield?
The Medfield.
I'm, I'm a Medfield Foundation board member.
I have not yet.
I thought maybe you were running.
We have a.
I usually work it instead of run it at this point.
Uh, I move that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, passes. And I, I do plan to run it this year, so you should make sure there's a calendar there to time it.
I think you should have recused yourself.
I haven't yet signed up to run yet though, so. Meeting minutes, none, town administrator.
Closed your potential.
Town administrator, oh, we had one question, I'm sorry, I went, circling back, we just had a question from Megan Sullivan asking how is Epsilon being paid for? Is that out of the budget for the?
It's out of the, the development committee has the budget, has the money in the budget.
Special articles.
It is out of the development committee's budget for the evaluation of the state hospital proposals. Thank you, Megan, and I'm sorry for, for almost missing that. Town administrator updates, Christine.
I have one very important update, you are not meeting on the 12th.
So Bill, I'll just be coming over to your house to hang out next Tuesday, how's that sound?
I knew that was gonna be a problem for you, I knew it.
Christine, why so early? All right, next meeting dates, October 19th, November 2nd, November 7th, special time meeting November 16th, 2021. I bet there'll be another one in there.
I, I guarantee it, but let's be hopeful.
October 19th, we'll be meeting with the development committee about the hospital. All right, Pete, selection reports.
The Tomcat Committee met this afternoon, that is the Town of Medfield Climate Action Plan Group, work, sub-working group of the Medfield Energy Committee, they're, Hilly passes is getting us in shape to have a plan. I had my office hours last Friday, and I, I talked with Gene Minio from CAM for an extended period of time. Listened to the Medfield Historical Society Program on Route 128 last night as I was driving home. Didn't see a lot of the pictures because of that, but it was a very interesting program. And Red Sox are ahead 2 to nothing.
You stole my report. Cheapers, all right. Gus?
When we do these weekly meetings, I don't have enough time to get into mischief, so I have nothing particularly to report. The Development Committee, I think, will give you an update next Tuesday on where the progress on the evaluation has gone.
Great. For me, I was gonna update on the Red Sox game, they're still ahead 2 to nothing, thanks Pete. Were you looking at my little thing here or?
No, I haven't.
Ah, you're headed up there, okay.
You've been watching the Red Sox game for this entire meeting?
No, just since 8 o'clock. Just checking in for, for the benefit of the people at home, in case they, you know, it's a public service. It's not the game, it's just this little, little game cast thing here, so. It's important, important activity. School Building Committee is meeting tomorrow night, Thursday night, the Affordable Housing Trust Board is meeting. And one of the things we're gonna talk about at the Affordable Housing Trust is this proposal we're putting together that will come to this board, maybe the 19th, depending on if we finalize it, which relates to trying to stimulate some more reconstruction renovation, potentially to your point, Pete, second and third floors in the downtown area, kind of smaller dispersed, you know, 8, 12 unit apartment buildings along the lines of what happened at 67 and 71 North, to try to interest some people who may not have the funds to do it, to provide some funds from the trust to encourage.
Is this capital A affordable or a small A affordable?
It would be capital A affordable.
Why? Why are we doing it?
We are doing it in part in the hopes to meet our safe harbor for this year, if we do it this year. And then to hopefully stimulate, see if there's more interest in some of these downtown developments that would kinda boost up the downtown similar to what we're there, so.
And there, what was behind my question is, if the development at the hospital goes where it's likely to go, there's 334 units, and I'm just worried how we're, how we're.
Yeah, this would be probably 16 tops. Like two eights or something like that, so there'd be two, four affordable units and 12 market units, so. But we'll talk about it.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, I think you're tuned into the sensitivity.
No, no, I, I understand.
Massive overshoot on the, on the affordable.
Yeah, yeah, I just think it's, it's probably unlikely to be by May.
So that's, that's fair, no, you're right, it's not, it's not gonna be by May.
Your, your comments reminded me of another conversation that I had this past week, which was with a member of the Medfield Housing Authority, and I asked Lisa Donovan if they were still planning on going forward with the Tilden addition, and they said absolutely, so.
And we are eagerly awaiting that next proposal from them. So we'll see, we haven't had an update from them in a while, so maybe that'll be on the agenda as well. So, all right, unless there is anything else, nothing in the informational, we will see everyone in two weeks as there are motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, no, motion carries, good night everyone, thank you for coming.